I call the meeting of the Cleveland Heights University Heights Board of Education to order. Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobal. Here. Ms. Pepler.
Here.
Mr. Register.
Here.
Mr. Silverman.
Here.
Okay. First item on our agenda is the superintendent's report.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. McDaniel?
Yes. This evening I have two items for you. The first is a field trip. This is for Wiley Middle School Vocal Music Field Trip to Cincinnati and Detroit, and it's scheduled May 8th through the 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Mr. Gainer, would you call the roll?
Mr. Cobal. Yes. Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
And the second item tonight is approval of the resolution adopting a Calamity Day Alternative Make-Up Plan for this current school year.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Do we need public, do you want any public comment for TV? Or has it been announced already?
No. You want to make a comment?
I may have to put you on the spot.
No, I'm saying.
No, I want, I'm cool with that.
You want an update?
I thought the people in the audience might want to know.
You want to update us on, we got a communication from OSBA. I think right now they have approved up to four additional calamity days with the idea that we would implement our plan, which means that there are certain days that we could use first before we actually use those four additional days. And a couple of those days have actually passed. For example, I think it was President's Day or something like that. I think Good Friday might be another one, but I don't know exactly. Maybe it's what Memorial Day or something? And, but anyway, there are some days that according to the state and the legislation that was passed, we should be using some of those days prior to us extending the number, the days into the summer. And again, that information is available, and anybody that wants it, we'll try to make sure it's available on the website in the next day or so. Anything else, Mr. Silverman?
I just want, I figure before you act on it, the folks in the audience who've been good enough to come should know what we're voting on. That's all.
Could I add something?
Sure.
Okay. With the approval of this resolution, what you're authorizing us to do is to, in lieu of some of those days that we had approved on our calendar as make-up days, in lieu of three of those days, we can provide make-up work for the children in the form of online lessons and/or actual paper lessons that go home. And so we're going to take advantage of that with your permission to send home some things, for example, practicing for OAA tests at the elementary level. And the expectation would be that we would provide them to children so that they can do it in time for the spring break and have it finished and brought back to school.
And the members of the board have a complete copy of the resolution. And it's a two-page resolution to, that we, I guess we could post it, or we could let people go online and see it. But it basically is in line with the legislation that was passed and the policies that we already had in place.
And then, once we put this in place, the only school that does need to make up one day is Noble Elementary School, and that will be on June the 6th.
Okay.
And so the other schools this year planned that you're describing would take place if we had to have other date, if we had, if we lost other days?
We have to do it.
Oh, we have to do the three?
Yes.
We have to send them home?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Just a question. I didn't see in anything that we, that we read either that you gave us and also what was online. Obviously, this is an exceptional year in terms of weather, and that's why we've resorted to this.
Yes.
Have people given thought to the fact that there could be other exceptional years in the future? And are there ways to proactively start thinking about the best way to handle that going forward?
For us?
In general, I just, I'm just curious.
I think the only option we have going forward is to do something like blizzard bags again. Other than that, I haven't heard anything, Cal.
And I guess one of, if the option is that we can do some online stuff, I guess, if we get to a point that that's going to happen, maybe we can put a plan in place to do that, you know, and not wait around. We may not get this next time, you know?
Right.
So we might be, we don't want to get stuck with it. Anything else? Any questions? Comments? Okay. Ms. Gainer.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
And I do have a couple of other things. This evening, Ron asked me if I would prepare this chart for you. This has dates for all the April board meetings, just so you all had this. I know, for example, I know.
They're already in my calendar, but seeing them on one piece of paper is a little shocking.
You think about doing the dates that were at the board meeting?
Yes.
I know, that's right.
No, no. And I know that, for example, on the 7th and the 8th, I don't know that you've actually confirmed those times with the consultant from Hazard, Young &amp; Atiyah, have we?
Well, I spoke with him the other day, right after he had sent out the email saying 5 o'clock, and I said I had it in my calendar as 6, but that I personally could make 5 work, and I don't, I didn't know if he checked with other board members. But I believe originally we had that as 6.
You did. You did.
Yeah.
Are the 15th, 16th, and 17th considered board meetings by?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Those are, you know, I guess it's a little bit tricky, but we will, in fact, be in what would constitute an executive session.
Okay, that's, okay.
As we interface with those candidates.
Got you. That's what I thought.
So, I mean, we would have to officially notice it, I believe.
We're going to verify that, but I think that's it.
So, Nyla, are you asking if we want to confirm right now through you for tho, those two times?
Yes. Are these times fine for everyone on the 7th and the 8th?
Let me just throw out, not deal breakers in either case, just the, you know that the reaching heights spelling bee was rescheduled for April 2nd.
Right.
So, so again, I think that probably means that knocks us out of, I don't know how long this meeting will go, but it'll probably knock us out of it. And I'll be glad to tell reaching heights that. I'm not saying we should change. I just wanted to make that.
Or maybe we could ask Ted if he could start earlier on the 2nd.
You know, again, I just wanted to throw it out for that reason. And then, just a personal thing, on April 15th, I think I had told everyone that's the second night, the second Seder for Passover, so I won't be able to make it in the evening. I can make it before the Seder.
Which date?
Well, what we might want to do is, we might want to, rather than having that evening with the candidate and the board, we might want to do it earlier in the day. I mean, we could rearrange their schedule to some extent.
That's fine. And also, we, I knew this from the beginning, and I'd be fine if, they said I could come in early or whatever if need be, so I'm happy to make my own self-available earlier if they, if need be.
Okay, well, we haven't worked, we haven't worked through that completely, so we could probably work that day. I mean, we got the whole day.
Well, I don't know. People work.
I know, but I'm saying that we, in theory, we have the whole day. Let me say it that way.
Okay.
And maybe we can work that out for that one particular day.
Okay, I appreciate that, but it's just.
But we'll see. The, I think the 2nd is problematic. If we started at 5, the issue would be, the B starts at 7, right?
Right.
That's right, correct.
I mean, I think the 2nd is a pretty intense day for us in terms of, well, I guess if we start at 5, maybe we can be done by 6:30 or so. And I can check on that tomorrow and see if that's.
Check with, check with them and see what the, you know, if we start an hour earlier.
Right. And I guess if people have responded to, the consultants, or will respond by the 24th, that will help us out a lot. You know, because we might be pretty close to having that done, and they might be just looking at the slate as opposed to.
Right.
Really, I mean, if we worked over the question.
As opposed to talking a great deal about the questions.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
So I, you know, everybody do their homework and.
Wait, so that's, the 2nd's the questions?
It's the questions and reviewing the slate of candidates.
Right, and then, and what we would actually.
That they were presenting.
Right. And what we would be doing is looking at the slate, doing the questions, and making sure that we're in sync in terms of our calendar, too.
I think, of the two, I think the questions we can all do amongst ourselves, the slate's, to me, much more substantive and important.
Right. And, go ahead.
I don't think, I don't feel like you have an answer to your question, Cal, and maybe we can't have it tonight. We don't even know if Ted could start at 5, but, but obviously, I'm, I feel like there's, if there's, if we have to make that choice, we're not going to make it to the B. We've paid, we've paid our entrance fee, they're making the money, they just don't get to make fun of us.
Well, that's a good, that's a way to look at it.
That's probably a real downside for you.
Right, so.
But, no, but, or we send a surrogate team or whatever, but whatever.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sure that'd be fine. I just wanted to make sure everyone knew.
We put like a bunch of English teachers from the high schools, like a pinch team?
Yeah.
So we'll check on 5 o'clock on the 2nd?
Yes.
And, okay. And the only other thing you asked, Ron, was about the May 6th regular board meeting and the conflict with the GCSSA Spring Social?
Right.
And whether or not the board wanted to change the meeting day.
Can you tell us a little bit more about the Spring Social? I think Nancy and Cal signed up for it.
Did I?
I think you did.
Cal and, Cal and Ron did. We had a third person, to be determined. I don't know.
Oh, so Nancy didn't, Nancy was the T, to be determined, the TBD must have been you.
I don't remember.
Tell us again what, what, what we were doing that day.
Okay. If, if you choose to, that's the Greater Cleveland School Superintendent Spring Social, and that is an event for superintendents, board members, treasurers, friends of the board, and the superintendent. It's a social event.
And we would be doing that because we want to socialize with other board members?
Of course. That would be the intent.
It's normal.
We can, we've.
We've done it in the past.
Yes.
Well, I think it's a good idea for us to know fewer of the people that are around us, so what do you guys think? Do you guys want to change the meeting day to do this?
I think this is going to be a long night. I.
What time does it start?
It starts at 6:30.
I'm inclined to move our meeting day.
I can do that.
Okay, either way.
So could we move to the, maybe the 13th?
Why don't we just move it to Monday?
We could do it Monday, I guess.
Yeah, because we, I mean, we've got so many.
Could it work on Monday?
We're starting to move until we got to have important things, we got to, we have to stay on our schedule, in my opinion.
Would Monday work?
The 12th.
The 5th?
May 5th?
Oh.
The 5th.
Oh, it was the 6th.
It was on the, the original date is the 6th, which would be that Tuesday, first Tuesday. Would Monday work?
I think potentially, I have to check.
Okay, it's okay with everybody and Eric Coe?
I think so, yes.
He has to check. So let's say that we'll do it on the 5th, pending Eric's ability to do it as well.
Okay.
And will you just let me or Scott know?
Tonight, yeah.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
I got to stop giving you work to do here. Okay. So we are at the point of, you didn't have anything else, did you?
No, I'm, I'm fine.
Okay, so, Mr. Gainer, you had a couple of things that we needed to deal with.
I do. You can take all these together.
Okay, so we got, on the finance, we got C1 through 3, which is approving purchase of, of purchase orders, accepting amounts for the budget commission, and then the establishing new public depositories. Any, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Gainer, is there any?
I do.
Commentary?
Yes. But I'll try to be brief. I just want to, all of these truly are related to the topic tonight, which is facilities. So I just wanted to back up a little bit and report out publicly about the sale of the bonds and the sale of the COPS, because today, everything finally closed. So I just wanted to remind everyone that the superintendent and I did go to Chicago, and we presented to Moody's and to Standard &amp; Poor's to get our ratings. We did get a AA2 rating from Moody's and a AA rating from Standard &amp; Poor's, and those are equivalent ratings. So we were very pleased with that. You know, we have copies of the, of the reports the rating agencies sent, if anyone wants to see those, but the, you know, the relevant pieces really are from Moody's, you know, they, they talk about how they gave us that rating because the financial operations of the district are expected to remain sound going forward, given the presence of healthy cash reserves and a trend of voter support for new operating levies. And then similarly, Standard &amp; Poor's said that they gave us the AA rating because of our strong financial position, supported by consistently high general fund balances, good financial management, and successful management of levy cycle in combination with the support of electorate. So the fact that the bond issue did pass at such a high rate was very helpful to us, and the fact that we were able to get those ratings helped tremendously with the bond sale and make that a successful and smooth transaction. So Al Baco and Kathy Petrie were there with us, so the team did the presentation. Al also sent a little bit of a summary, and I just want to make a couple of points from that. He said the district sold $134.8 million of tax-exempt bonds through the underwriting syndicate of Stiefel Nicholas, which is Al's firm, Fifth Third Securities, which was Marvin Founds, and then Keybank Capital Markets, which was Jeff Rink. As you know, the bond sale went very well, thanks in large part by the district's excellent financial condition, which led to the great bonding rating, bond rating of AA2 by Moody's and AA by Standard &amp; Poor's. There was tremendous demand for the district's bonds, especially by large institutional investors. The overall weighted average interest rate on the 38-year bonds was 4.76%. All indications in the marketplace are that the long-term interest rates were trending upwards, so moving quickly, and selling those bonds was very important. And the district and, the board and the taxpayers of the district should be very excited about the, the bond sale. So it was very smooth. I did miss a board meeting and went to St. Louis, and that was a very exciting and neat process to see how that worked, and, and it was, there was a tremendous amount of demand. Stiefel Nicholas in particular did a great job of making sure that they had institutional buyers lined up to get those, you know, for, usually there's some difficulty with selling bonds 38 years out, and it's not typically done, and there were buyers who wanted those. Similarly, we just closed on the COPS. And again, those COPS are certificates of participation. That was the $21 million that we were going to get by leveraging 1 and 1/4 million dollars of PI money. Similarly, he says the markets cooperated, and we were able to issue the full amount of the COPS. And better yet, the average annual loan repayment is, is $1,240,000, so we saved a little bit in, in annual PI repayment. The market for the general obligation bonds and the COPS are quite different. He says, you know, the primary buyers of COPS are more money management firms, trust accounts, and other buyers looking for a bit more yield. The overall weighted average on the 30-year COPS is 4.39%. So again, he goes on to talk about how he thought bringing those issues to market when we did was a good strategy in the long run, and as the interest rates were trending upwards. So we do have that. We have the official statements for both the COPS issue and for the bond issue, and that I think we've supplied to the FAC, and they're online and available for those folks, but if anyone else has an interest in ever looking through those documents, we have them. And actually, Al presented us, we were back here with a nice little plaque that's the cover of our issue for the, for the bond. Just because it is, it was one of the largest issues in the state, so it was a, a big deal for that to happen. The only other thing that I wanted to mention briefly is that, you know, there's, we did issue the bonds in their entirety upfront, and we did that because interest rates were trending upwards. And if we didn't do that, either as interest rates continue to climb, we wouldn't have, we would have had to go above the millage that we said we would when we talked to the community, to keep the same level of project, or we would have had to scale back the project. But in doing that, there are obligations. We have to spend the money. You know, if we don't do that, then we're accused of hedging and, and engaging in arbitrage and all these different things. We've taken the money upfront, we can't sit with it and earn interest on it, and, and, you know, we, we are required to spend cer, we have certain spending thresholds based on the plan that we have. So I just want to throw that out there, because that's the thing, there are lots of considerations to keep the project moving and to keep doing what we're doing, but that's the consideration that always I worry over, is that there are IRS obligations to spend this money. There's a five-year spend down based on the master facilities plan that we've submitted, and so we need to keep that process moving forward. Otherwise, those tax-exempt bonds become taxable, and I don't think that the investors are the ones who are going to end up paying 30% taxes on $134.8 million in bonds. So I just wanted to, to throw that out there, too, to make sure that we're all aware that there are things we need to do and obligations we have.
So we got concurrent spend down on the COPS and the bonds?
Correct. And there's actually three years.
So there's some kind of mix that we have to maintain?
Yes. And I have to sign off that, to the IRS, that we will meet the spend down requirements for both the COPS and the bonds, but they're spent concurrently, yes.
And will that, will, will the detail around those spend down requirements be, be shared with us in conjunction with the discussion around the enabling projects and, and the other projects? Will that be shared with us?
We certainly can, yes. Absolutely. Yeah. I mean, we, Scott worked very closely with Regency Construction and PMC in developing the cash flow models that allowed us to see that we could, in fact, make those required thresholds for spending. And so we had quite a few discussions about that, to be sure that it was possible that we could make those. And I have the schedule tacked up in my conference room with a big exclamation point that, you know, we've got to stay on target to meet those spending thresholds.
And it's all consistent with the timelines that we've all seen.
It is.
And I, I think that, you know, Kathy, as our bond counsel, also did an analysis, and they had to sign off that they felt that we were in compliance and would have no issue meeting the spending requirements.
So just a, I mean, earlier when we talked, that we already had realized some savings, but I, you know, I'm not clear what that is yet. But if we have during the course of the project, either have savings or don't use all the contingency, for example, is, that's going to affect whether or not we can do the spend down? Is that?
Not likely. No.
It's not enough?
It's not enough.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
And there is some cushion with the spend down, that we're expected to overspend those reserves as long as we stay on task with the project.
Yeah. It gets easier for us to meet the spend down requirements the further out we get, in fact. The most challenging one is the one-year threshold to meet. After that, it gets easier and easier.
So, so just to, to put these items on here, then, we have, so we had a couple of purchase orders, because we have started work with our consultants on this project. So although we usually scold people for confirming purchase orders, we didn't have the funds in place nor the appropriations to start the project. So that's what this is. These are the confirming purchase orders related to the project. Also, the county wanted us to make, you know, we had to make sure that the, the bond issue was accurately reflected on the tax rate resolution, so that's why we have that here. And then we do have an investment advisor who's making sure that we maximize, even though we're very limited in what we can invest in. But they've, they've asked us to name a few new depositories, so that will give them more options in terms of what they can do with the money. So those are the three items that I have for finance for you.
So we're giving the county the option on the depositories?
No, no. The county is simply setting the tax rate. The depositories are our investment advisor. One of the depositories.
Okay, okay. Got it.
And you're comfortable with those depositories? Yes. And I think there won't be much there, but they, they just want to have all options available to them. I mean, right now, most of the money, although interestingly, I was really surprised with this, we had $134.8 million coming in, and, and a couple, a couple of our banks didn't want to accept that money. And you, you know, I guess that just kind of struck me as odd, but because they do have to collateralize it, because we're a governmental agency, and there are all these requirements on their end, they, you know, they just, they weren't capable of doing that. So, so we did meet with the advisor, and they've laid out a plan for us, at least for the first five years. We expect to make, you know, several millions of dollars in interest and on the front end, and so we're pretty excited about that, actually.
Okay. Mr. Gainer?
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobal?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Okay. So that's regular business. Now we get to the work session. And I think the first thing that we have is, is we want to do a resolution.
Well, I think, if I may.
You want to go first?
I think I would like to recommend that we do the work session portion and then come back to, to the resolutions, if you would mind.
Okay, that's fine.
So I would like to, if you're ready.
Yeah, we're fine with that.
We'll turn the microphone over to Mr. Zanoni.
Okay. Great. Thank you, thank you very mu, can everybody hear me? Am I? You are.
Is it, is it hard?
Okay. Great.
You don't have to press it or anything.
Okay, excellent. I'm passing to you, in front of you is the, one of the key elements of our last work session that was requested, and we were in process because of the timing. And the timing is actually very good, because now that we've, you've sold the bonds, we have the money, everyone's been asking, what, what are the budgets? And one in particular are the enabling projects. There was concern, and the question was, did you budget for all of the enabling projects? And we did. And what you have in front of you is a series of sheets. The first one is a breakdown, a summary of the enabling projects, which I'm going to go through. The second sheet is a budget comparison of all our committed costs, which is broken down between the high school, Roxborough Middle School, Monticello Middle School, and the enabling projects. So we've broken those down individually. And by the way, we've been working with the treasurer's office. These are documents that are going to be working, will be working with from, from now till the end of the project. Behind that is actually a summary of what, what are hard costs and soft costs, one of, and contingency. One of the questions also was, are we spending it on bricks and mortar, or are we spending it on lots of consultants? And we, you'll see that 85% of the dollars spent are for hard costs, which is excellent for this type of project. Oftentimes, these projects get more closer to the 80 to 75%. Due to the large nature of it, we get some real economies, especially on the consulting side. And so we have 15% total for contingencies and, and soft costs. And then behind.
Where, where do you, get me where you are.
Ron, I'm on page, and I'm sorry, I'm going too fast.
It's really the third sheet.
The third sheet, which is sort of an 8 and 1/2 by 11. I think it's in your hand.
Yeah.
This one?
Yes.
This one?
Oh. Yes. And here's a breakdown. It break down, it breaks down the hard costs for the high school, Roxborough Middle School, Monticello Middle School, and the enabling, and it shows a total hard cost of 85%. Then it shows the soft costs for all of those projects, which is 11%. And then we have an owner hard cost contingency of 3% against all those projects, and then soft cost contingency of 1% on, on, for all our soft costs, which are pretty significant dollars. There is, I will tell you, though, in the hard costs, there is a thing called a construction manager's contingency, so there is another contingency sitting in those numbers, but those are considered part of the hard costs. If we don't, if we don't spend those number, those dollars, they revert back to the district, and oftentimes, you use those dollars to buy alternates and buy other, other hard costs. So they're going to be used for hard costs, we just don't know what they're assigned to at the, at this point in time. The next.
Steve, is, is this, is the percentage contingency standard?
Ye, yes, it is.
This is standard?
These are standard.
3% on hard costs and 1% on soft costs?
Yes. For, for this size project. If it was a smaller project, Ron, it would be much, it would be higher. It's because of the sheer volume of dollars that we get to work with. It's interesting, if the project was half the size, we probably would be a higher contingency than that. And if it was a quarter size, it'd be significantly higher, again, because of, of the nature of the, of type of project.
Steve, I, based on Ron's question and your answer, I want to make sure I understand something. The, the 3 and the 1 are the, are the percentage of the total expenses. They're not that the contingency for hard costs was set at 3%?
Yeah, there's two 3%. There's a 3% in those hard costs.
Okay.
And there's a 3%, so it's really 6, but for the owner's side.
Okay.
I hope I answered that correctly.
But, but it, but that is a, there, it is different for the soft costs? What is the percentage for the soft costs?
Oh, yes. Soft cost is 1% against the total project, so that's 1% of the project. That's a pretty significant number. Soft costs only rep, contingency. Are you asking about the contingency?
Yeah. I, I mean, I understand that this number represents 1% of the total cost.
Yes.
But.
a pretty significant number. Soft costs only rep, uh, contingency. Are you asking about the contingency?
Yeah, I, I mean, I understand that this number represents 1% of the total cost.
Yes.
But that's not 1% of the-
Of the 11, of one, of 17 million, that would be, and I'm not very good at the math, but it's obviously about 8% of the, of the, of the total soft cost.
Right, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yes, 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 yes. And then if you, yes, that's exactly right.
It's 1% of the total cost of the project, but 8% of the soft cost.
Yes, yes. The, the next sheet, and I'm going to wait to the end to go to that, the summary on the, on the, on the enabling projects, is the high school project. And this sheet shows you what are estimates and what have already been, been negotiated. And you'll see on the hard costs section, which is called high school, cost of work is still an estimate because we haven't, we haven't built anything yet. But you can see, we have already negotiated with the construction manager. Their pre-construction services are all negotiated. Our general conditions against all of that work has been negotiated. Our construction stage personnel, our CMR fee, our CMR contingency. And so those numbers are now in black, as you can see, because they're not estimates anymore. And then if you go to the soft costs on the high school, we've already done a land survey, and you can see we actually did it a little less than, than, than what was expected. We have some soil borings and phase one environmental report. We haven't done everything there so that, that, even though it's less. Then the others are such as permits, testing, the bid documents, all of those are again in red. But we have negotiated design professional fees. That was through the process of selection. And so those are, those have been solidified. And you can see they're a little bit less than what was budgeted. So we're, yes, Ron?
So moving from the red to the black, the land survey, that's a real definite cost. That's spent money, no more money?
On the land survey, yes.
Okay. But on the, the soil borings, we're going to get more?
Yes, but-
How do we know that from what we, what you give us?
Because we've only done the environmental report and we haven't done-
Yeah, I know, but I'm just thinking about the, 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 the format of what we see in front of us. How would we, is there a way for us to know that? On this, if we look at it, it looks like we-
You can't, you can't tell. And I, that's a very good, good observation. It's, it isn't a final cost. And maybe what we need to do is modify the, the document so we can show-
Could you add a column on the right that just says incomplete next to total?
Yes, yeah. That's an excellent observation. And we can add another-
Column.
Another color?
Well, not everyone has a color printer.
Or another color. What might be simpler. You know, maybe we put it in green or something like that, and then you know it's not, it's, it's-
That it's growing, green is growing.
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Okay, but that would be good because I think-
Excellent.
You know, for me, after we hear you and look at this and ask all our questions, then I can look at it. And so, you know, I know that we can expect something different. We might not even have any idea to what extent it's going to grow from 26, you know, how close this is going to get to 82. You may not know that for another week or two or three or whatever. But we would at least know that we're not done there.
That's, that's excellent. And, and also, this document gets updated every month. So we, every expenditure. So you'll see that every month, this document will change and, and modify as we, as we go through. And there is behind these documents, a whole bunch of series more, and they're called a checkbook, and they go every individual item. They, it's all broken down. So there's even more. I'm, I'm only giving you the summaries today for, for your review. The next, and as you can see, then each the hard and soft total, and then you can see our budget of 93 million. And then you can go across what the contracts are coming to and what we've spent. And you can see, again, we show estimates in the total cost summary. Again, Ron, I think your, your observation, we would change even in this column, let's say if we used a different color, for, for something such as the soil borings, phase one environmental. The next, the next sheet shows you the Roxborough Middle School. And as you are aware, we have not contracted for anything on those, on those projects. We're going to go through a selection process for the middle schools, also for the architects. The reason being, because it, it's, its timing is a little farther along. It makes no sense to, to go through, through that process yet. But it's all been budgeted, and that's why everything is, is in red.
Steve, I have a question.
Yes.
Between budget and contract summary, I know on the other ones, the difference between the two, the subtotal is relatively minor between the two. On the first one, it's a, it's $4 million. So I guess it'd be, the question I'm asking is, what's the difference between those two numbers?
The, right now, it's because of, if you look, here's the so, are you talking about soft costs or hard costs?
Talking all of them.
The contingency, it's a smaller, it's a smaller project compared to the, to the-
What creates the discrepancy between the two columns?
Wait a minute, maybe I didn't answer your, I didn't understand your question.
On all four sheets, you have, the first column says budget, the second one says contract summary. When we get to the bottom where it says subtotal project cost for each of these, on the first one-
Contingency is not in there yet.
It's not in there. Contingency's not in there.
The difference between the two is a contingency.
Is the contingency.
That's what I thought, I wanted to make sure.
Yes, thank you. Thanks, thank you, Ron. The, the next one, again, we have the Monticello Middle School. Again, it is the same way. It's, it's set up the, the exact same way as the other one. We really don't know those costs. And then last one are the enabling projects. And what I'd like to do, which would make it easier, if we could go to the front page, which is just a summary, because it's a little simpler to read and, and understand, I'd like to walk you through each of the enabling projects. And the enabling projects, they total 15,622,472 dollars. On our budgets, we actually simplified it to 15.7, just so you know, just to make it simpler. But let's go through each item so we can, and please ask questions as we go to each one. The first one is the Millikan Operations Center. As you are aware, we're going to be taking some elements out of this building and then also in the Delisle Building and consolidating those at Millikan. What it does for us at this site, it takes away some of the parking and some of the usage on this site, which enables us to have a much better situation for the Wiley, the Wiley site. And that, we have a budget there of 105,000, and our architects have been working, working within that, within that framework.
Steve, you said from this site, did, did you, did you mean Wiley?
Right, Wiley.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
And remind me again, how many, how many staff we believe that will be?
About six.
From here, from Wiley?
About 16.
And then what about from Delisle?
If we do that, it would be about eight.
Okay. And they, they would be IT?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Thank you.
So this is going to be the total cost of what it's going to take us to get Millikan up and running?
Correct.
For those uses.
Correct.
Are you, is, is there a hidden message here somewhere?
Well, I, you know, we, if we want to bring more people, we'll probably have to spend a little more money.
Well, I think if you wanted to re-bring that building back up to operation for the purposes of a school, the costs would be dramatically higher. So for one thing, we're not going to operate all of the building. We're only going to be in a small portion of the building, first of all. Second of all, this is going to be our grounds and trade staff. So they're doing a lot of the work themselves. And for instance, whereas if we put it together for, as a school, we'd have to put new flooring down. For them, they're just taking the old flooring up and painting the floor. It's perfectly acceptable for the grounds and trade staff. So there's, there are significant efficiencies and cost savings to just putting the grounds and trades there that we would not reap if we were, say, going to have that be a school building. And also, remember, their occupancy is temporary. So if you were to say to me, Steve, all the issues that are at that building, we want to fix them and address them, again, the cost would be much, much higher. So there are things we're not going to address because our occupancy there is temporary. We're not going to be there, you know, indefinitely.
But the other staff, the IT staff coming from Delisle, you think that, you just said if we do that, if, so that expense is not in here?
Yeah, and I don't think that it, it's any more than that, frankly. The things that they need to get done in the building are things that'll work whether we have a couple of extra IT folks there or not.
We're going to treat it basically as four walls and a roof, as opposed to a office building or a school building.
Yes.
Yeah.
It's got heat and electricity and running water.
Right.
And it's no Taj Mahal.
Yes.
I mean, never was, but-
And, and part of the reason, can, can you articulate the reason why you want to move the, I, I get why we want to move people from Wiley, why we have to. Why are, why do we want to move these people from Delisle?
Well, we're considering moving some educational programming from the high school rather than moving it down to the Wiley site, moving it into the Delisle site.
So that would allow for more flexibility for that?
Right, that's exactly correct.
Yes. Any other questions on, on Millikan? The next item is bus parking. We have it called capital slash lease cost of 316,000. It's basically to move all the buses off of this site, again, because this becomes more part of the Wiley site. And I'm actually going to pass, maybe we should pass this now?
Yeah, I think so.
I think this would be good. We have a, a layout of the Wiley site. Actually, this is helpful to understand the other enabling projects as we go through them.
And basically, in this schematic drawing, it's a site plan of the Wiley site. And I'll wait till it gets all the way around.
Yeah, and I think, I'm concerned that the, can we hold this up and let the audience see it or something and explain it to them too?
Well, there's only, I think we have three civilians in the audience.
Three civilians, okay, well.
Maybe get copies made?
Yeah.
Oh, wait, four, I'm sorry. There's four civilians.
Yeah, George can have, he's here, and-
Got an extra here.
We've got an extra one there. We can get some copies made.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Great.
Okay, thanks.
Now, in this, the, what you have right now, this is not definitive. This is the current thinking right now.
It's concept.
This is the latest concept.
It's getting definitive, though, Eric.
Yes.
Well, no, what I'm, what I'm saying is, we haven't pulled permits on this. It has, this is, this is-
No.
No, no permits.
This is where the general thought process is right now.
And if you go to the second item, why, why you're looking at this is, the bus parking is on this site, and we really can't accommodate the bus parking on this site to accommodate the Wiley, the new, the temporary Wiley campus. So what we need as an enabling project is to find a new location for bus parking, which would involve probably a capital cost and a lease cost. And we're in negotiations with, and looking at certain, certain possibilities for that right now. And we have a budget which we feel very confident around of, of 316,000.
Okay. So if we look at these enabling projects, and I look at career technical modifications, we're talking about modifications to Wiley?
No.
Or are we talking about other modifications that we might have to do, or other accommodations that we might have to have as well?
You're jumping ahead, sir.
Am I?
You've got like 10 things before you get to CTE. You've got to go in sequence, like the construction project.
I don't, I don't, I don't have a problem answering that because-
I thought we were going in sequence.
And, and Ron, this helps because then, when we get to the items that are more associated with this, it isn't at Wiley. It would be at Delisle, where we would do some modifications. One is the auto shop is what we're looking at, possibly putting into the gymnasium. Those are the career technical modifications that we're discussing.
And it fits into the Millikan Operations Center discussion.
Okay.
Yes.
I thought we go and see them.
Because we've moved people out of Delisle, gives us a little extra space, so now we can accommodate the career tech that we need to, that we just can't easily accommodate it on the Wiley campus.
Right, okay.
Excellent.
Steve, other than as soon as possible, do we have a target date for finalizing the, these bus parking, you know, I know you said you have a couple of things in the works, so.
Right, as soon as possible.
As soon as possible, we could get this resolved and we-
Our discussions around that are, are fairly advanced.
Yeah.
And I hope to bring something even-
I don't need it exactly, just-
Yeah, it could be, it could be at next month's board meeting, frankly. Could be that soon.
So we'll say in the next couple of months.
Could be next couple of months, absolutely.
And, and let me point out, these are budgets, but they are conservative budgets, and we are finding that maybe we can save some money on some of the options that are here. So we're working very diligently. So if we can move these dollars back somewhere else, back to the overall projects, we certainly, that's a benefit. And we're working very hard on that.
If, for the, the document we're looking at right now, if it's going to be a public document, if we could get more detail on it, because otherwise, if people look at some of these numbers, like $9 million, $2 million, they're going to say, hey, what do you spend the money on? So if it's possible to get some of the dialogue you're giving us here, to give a little bit more detail, because if, once it becomes a public document, my concern is people will have sticker shock.
I think that, that, that will also take place through the process with the facilities accountability committee.
Yes, it will.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and my assumption is that they would have access to all, all of these documents also.
And the detail.
Is there, only by this way. They're going to ask you, you know, I mean, they're, they're going to ask for that, so. Just beat them to the pass.
Any other questions on the bus parking? Okay, I'm going to go to the temporary pool. We're looking at different options for, for, for a pool, either at a, using, and obviously it would be using some sort of existing pool that would be in a, in an adjacent community. And we have a lot of different options that we're looking at that right now.
And that, Steve, the assumption is two, two years?
Yes, it is.
Because once the middle schools move into Wiley, we don't typically have pool availability for the middle schools. So that expense is assumed for two?
That, that, two years, yes. For the two years-
And we have a new pool at the high school.
Once we get a new pool.
I just mean, I just mean, we're not going to have it for the, for the middle school.
That's correct. That's correct. The next is a practice gym, capital lease cost, and we are looking at some multiple options right now. And we actually have some good ones that maybe we can get this, this value down, down a little bit. And there's some possible gyms right here in the community that we might be able to use. We, oh, I'm sorry, excuse me. The practice gym is actually, if you look on this site plan, I'm sorry, I jumped to the event gym. The practice gym is shown on the Wiley site, which would be a temporary. It's part of the modular system of what we would do to, to Wiley.
And when you say practice, is that practice for teams or practice for gym class?
Both.
Both. Yes.
Steve, the reason the practice gym can't be used as the event gym is it's not large enough, it's not conducive to having-
It depends on scheduling. And we are in discussions of the possibility of trying to find a way, if, whatever we come up as the event gym, would also allow us to do practices at that gym.
But, but the other direction could-
But the one, but the one that we're putting on the site, you're right. It cannot be used as a, as a event gym because it's, it would, it's too small.
Couldn't have seating.
Yeah, it would make it way too big and complicated to have, put seating into that.
And the expense of, of blowing out a wall or something would be prohibitive, I assume.
Absolutely.
It would. And it gets into all sorts of things. I mean, it's amazing what, it just sort of snowballs the costs in terms of what we would have to do.
Is this a modular unit?
We're not sure. We're not sure. It may be a modular, but it also maybe we could use one of these. They make these pre-manufactured structures, which is, it has its structure all done, its walls all done, and you sort of assemble it.
It wouldn't be like the airlock they use at the Cleveland Stadium?
No, no, it's not a, not a blow up, no. What was that?
I said Lego, I'm just kidding.
Yeah. And that's shown, and that's why it's helpful having that, that drawing, that's shown on the, on the Wiley site. The, what I meant was, on the event gym, we have some good options that we're looking at, and we're in negotiation and, and discussions, and where maybe we can get those costs down, down a little bit. And there's some really good options out there for us. Now, the swing space modulars Wiley, at Wiley site, first of all, it must be shown that these are going to have a use of over a six-year period. It's not just for one year. So yes, it is significant cost. It's always been in a cost in the master plan. And what you're seeing in front of you is a, a layout of where those modulars, and when we talk about modulars, we really focus more on the classrooms because they, they come in a very standard way. You can buy, you can buy them or rent them. I can't tell you if we're buying. I can't tell you if we're renting. And I can't tell you if we're buying new, or we're renting new, or we're buying old. We're looking at all the options to see if we can get the mo, the most bang for the- We're looking at all the options to see if we can get the most bang for the buck, and the quality level. We are having the teachers and some key administrators are gonna go on tours to look at these, these types of, of, of classrooms, and we're going through, through a whole process of that right now.
This is, this is, this is pretty much the same thing that Lakewood did.
Yes, very, yes.
If you use aerial maps, or depending on the mapping service and how frequent, how update they are, if you do a flyover of Lakewood, you can see across from your high school, they have a whole field of basically trailers connected one, so it becomes a temporary structure. So it's basically the same thing.
Yes.
But ours, to be honest, this has much more of a building look than theirs, which just looks like Quonson Hudson.
It's pretty, pretty, pretty brutal. And you could see, we've gotta give our architects, TDA, who are working on this, they, they kinda spread them out in a way, you're right, in a more, I think a more desirable fashion.
It's air and light, whatever more.
Well, I don't expect to be able to have this conversation tonight, but I would at some point love to hear, at least, whether you think that the Building and Trades folks will need any specialized training or support to deal with these structures down the road. I, I don't know, I, it's completely out of my knowledge base, but it seems to me that there would be some key differences.
Yeah, they, they're, yeah, yeah.
In this layout, are you at the point of doing programmatic ideas that these, these, this small school's gonna be in this section, these programs are gonna be these spaces? Are you at that juncture yet, or?
We are. We're working on that right now with the Educational Services staff.
What's the, the average lifespan of a, of a modular unit is? Twenty, thirty years?
About twenty some odd years. Some have lasted even, even longer, but standard is about twenty years.
Yeah, but I did also hear you say, one of the options you're looking at are, are used ones available.
Yes.
You would, you would think somebody by this point might have come up with some idea of a collaborative, because, you know, they're always going to different schools being...
That's exactly right, because they're, they're really temporary structures, and let's say someone started them up new, and they're only five years old, we're only talking about six years, so we need to look at all those options.
So that's in your, in your, that's on your radar?
Yes, it is. Absolutely, it is. So, and the architects are working on that, and we're really working at, at looking at what options we have. And that's why I couldn't say today what the best option is. We're really gonna look at the quality level versus, and also the expense. If we can save some money, we'll, we'll definitely do that.
In the corridors, on the, in the yellow corridors here, where the parking, basically where the trades park their vehicles, is that, those breaks in line, does that denote a section of, a segment of the floor, that's slope for ADA?
Yes.
Yes, change of elevation.
Cause there is, there's a change in elevation, yes.
Yes.
Cause they address ADA.
The, the next item still works with, it's part of this, is, is we also have modifications at Wiley. One, probably the most significant, as you can see, is the site work, where we're doing the parking, the drives, all the connections of that. That's pretty, very significant, significant work. Plus, we will have, and we don't, we're now discovering that, and we're working with the architects, we will have some work inside the existing Wiley building that we may have to do some modifications to make sure that, that everything, everything works, especially when you get to connections to these, to the modular sections, things like that, making sure all the, we're meeting all the necessary codes and, and exiting requirements.
These numbers, okay, we're basically, we're, we're putting a road and pay, or a knack, we're putting a drive and parking through our current field. When we're done with this, the, the cost of removing that, is that in these numbers?
At present, it is not. It is not, and I'll tell you why. Because we, we're not sure if funding comes like we would like. We'd like to use this also as swing space for the elementaries. We may have that ability to use that.
So theoretically, then?
We could get more usage.
If we use it for the elementaries, we would continue to use it, and then we would build into the elementary project?
Yes.
The removal cost to restore it to its original state?
That's, that's...
Or what it used to be?
That's correct.
Now, when we think about the cost of the parking and paving and all that, that's included in the two million?
In the two million, yes, it is. Yes. Any other questions?
Yeah, I mean, are we still at the top, or are we ready to move to the bottom?
It's going in order.
We're in the middle.
I just, I just, we, if I could go real quickly, we have Roxborough and Monticello, we're doing some minor modifications, some parking, some things of that, that nature. We're gonna try, though, if we can, if we could save some of that work, we can, and use it for the actual final projects. Career technical modifications, I think I've gone over that for you. And then we have a temporary relocation of central food service. As you're aware of, the central food service is now in the high school. What we're doing is, again, we're going to use both Monticello and Roxborough. We're kinda splitting it. And we're hoping that when we buy new equipment, this could be paid out of, right now, it's budgeted in the enabling projects, but if we could take, if this could be final equipment that eventually we would use at Roxborough and, and Monticello, we're just buying it early, about two years earlier, and we'll, we'll, we'll get that savings.
Yeah, that was a question on central kitchen. Do we wanna keep central kitchen as is, or is this a good opportunity to think about expanding Monticello and Roxborough to help us out in terms of, you know, a lot of stuff is happening with central kitchen at the high school, and I don't know, you know, we might have some other efficiencies that we could look at.
Ron, one of the, one of the things that we're struggling with is because we, when we do the Roxborough and Monticello projects, we close those schools down for the construction. So if we were to put the central kitchen there, we would have to find a way at those locations to build around them. What we're trying to do, so the idea was, keep the central, the final central kitchen would, would remain, would become part of the new high school project, it's budgeted that way. What I was saying is, we have to buy equipment eventually for the, for Roxborough and Monticello, new equipment. Rather than taking it out of the enabling projects, which we are now, we might be able to take it out of their actual construction projects, leave that equipment there, package it nicely, protect it, and while it's, while it's not in use, it then becomes reused for the, for the final project. And so we actually save money by, if we can, we're trying to analyze doing that.
Can you explain the, the career tech modifications at Taylor? I don't call it Delisle. Taylor.
At Delisle?
We've got three hundred thousand dollars here. Now, I know that the CTE cost, when we look at the budget for the high school, is, you know, high bay is way high. The question I'm trying to reconcile is, it's only three hundred thousand dollars to put the program in, in the tailor for a couple of years, why is it so relatively inexpensive compared to what a permanent home would be? For, especially for a very, very particular program like auto program.
Well, first of all, the space is there at Delisle. We don't have to build it.
Right.
So, so that we're only modifying an existing gym, putting some lifts in it, and things of, things of that nature. Building a whole new building as part of the overall building, this, these high bay areas, you wanna make them very flexible, and they'll have a lot more requirements in terms of, for flexibility for equipment, electrical flexibility. You need to do that, because we don't know twenty years down, down the road. We don't wanna build a, a high bay area that only can be done, used for one use. Maybe, maybe cars change totally different.
So this is basically a slab, a slab floor, put some lifts in it, use it like ostensibly a glorified garage, versus what you're gonna build at the high school is a true garage, like Simon's just built over on Lee Road?
Yes, and actually would also have, have, the classroom space would be a little bit more highly technical. There's a lot of, lot of support to it.
This, this is just get you in, make it last for two years, the other ones got a fifty-year lifespan, okay.
But I will tell you on that, one of the things that we're hoping to do is, maybe on some of these lifts, we could reuse them back to the, to the new, new person. And then the last...
Are we gonna try to move anything that we have now, in terms of the lifts and stuff? Are we gonna bring them over here temporarily, or are we gonna?
Any equipment that we can move, we will move.
We will.
I don't know the details of that right now, Ron. I don't know that we've identified that specifically, but anything that can be reused, we will reuse.
And the last item are, are soft costs, which are, you know, mainly consultant costs. And as you can see, that's, when you add this all together, you get fifteen million six hundred thousand, six twenty-two, or fif, we call it fifteen seven, we just...
Why was the land survey so much higher than we had anticipated?
It was less.
It was less. You mean on, for the high school project?
Well, the land survey on, on enabling project?
Oh, well, that's...
It came in at eight thousand, and we budgeted twenty-eight.
One of the things is, is because, here, here's what, what, what it is. Originally, we didn't realize we were gonna have to do this much work on this site. So now we had to survey a much larger area than what was originally anticipated for the survey. And one of the things, especially with the way we're doing all this parking and this drive that goes all the way around, it just was much more complicated, and we needed more information on the land survey.
Cause you, basically a land survey, you would have just done, okay, here's the site, but because you're cutting into the dirt?
Yes.
You need the elevation data, things like that.
And utilities, we've got, because we're, we wanna make sure we're not hitting anything.
Now, we gave an easement to the City University Act years ago for their pool. I don't know if that has any impact on the, if we've given, if that lands an issue or not.
I don't know that it does.
I don't know if it does, yeah.
This is a pool in that corner?
But we don't, that's not part of...
I'm just throwing it out there, I don't know if that's, you know...
I, I don't think that's gonna come into play.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, it was like sixteen years ago, but, so...
Okay, that ends the portion on the budget. What we'd like to go through next is, is the stadium project. And what we have here is, we now have a guaranteed maximum price from our construction. And, why don't we pass these out, just so everyone has them? Great. This is just a site plan, so you, as we go through this. As you're aware, when this project was budgeted for the stadium, the project budget for the, what we call cost of work, or subcontractor's work, was budgeted two point six, two million six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This GMP amendment comes in at two million five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and two dollars. There are additional costs, which you see, and I'll, as you can see, there's the cost of the, of the subcontractor's work, but then there is the CM's construction stage personnel, their general conditions costs, their contingency, and their fee. All of those are broken out separately, and if you were to go back to that original budget, you'll see those numbers. So those numbers are in addition to the two point six five oh. The two million five hundred and eighty-eight thousand, we sat down with Gilbane, Ozan, and we worked with them, and we went back and forth, and we feel we've got a very good GMP from them. But there's some modifications from what we've originally, originally discussed. And one of the key modifications, what I'd like to do is actually go to the second, I'd like to first describe to you what the scope of work is for this GMP, and then you can ask questions, and then we'll talk about any, what, what are we buying for two million, two point five million? Well, first of all, it's a site preparation, preparation. This number also includes turf and drainage, and this is an Envirofill turf. It's a, called a Motts Crossflex turf with Alveo shock pad, and it's Envirofill coated sand infill material. This includes track topping, and this is a mid-level track, it's not the very top of the line, but it's not the lowest end, it's a good, safe track topping, which is the Benyon BSS two hundred system. Includes a site fence, including corrals under the grandstand. It includes a grandstands for a thousand-seat home stands with press box, with concrete under the home stands. It does not include visitor stands. Then it also includes electrical, which also allows for future, future lighting, including the base electrical, but also having large light fixtures. It also includes some allowances that we wanna have some track and vehicular pavement repair allowance, so there's any, any, we may have to see some repairs, especially on the, on the vehicular pavement that sits around it, may, may get damaged during construction, so we wanna make sure we have that. And then also some low voltage pieces that we have in there. And that gives us then our two million five hundred and eighty-eight thousand. It does not, and what makes this a little bit different is, we do have alternates, which is in that third item that's in this piece. We do have, as an alternate, visitor grandstands for five hundred seats, and that's a hundred and twenty-six thousand. We have increasing the home grandstand capacity to two thousand seats from one thousand, that's two hundred and thirty-one thousand. We have as an alternate also an emergency generator, which is thirty-seven thousand. And we also have a, an alternate going to prescription performance sod. It's been pointed out to us that it's very, it's, you have to use it mainly for game day use only. That would be a deduct alternate of two hundred and fifty-six thousand.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Steve, what page is this on?
Yeah, it's like the third document. If you pull your clip out, it's the, it's actually the third document.
Actually, Eric, that second document was the one I, I read all the descriptions. Behind these are detailed estimates and are included in here. This is part of the GMP amendment. Now, I, I wanna make sure that you all understand, you know, when we went to Envirofill compared to the crumb rubber, that was a, a cost increase compared to what we were budgeting, we were originally budgeting for crumb rubber, and now we've gone to a better, better material, more, less, you know, it's more expensive material. It had an added cost of two hundred and sixteen thousand, and that's what sort of pulled us out to go down to the thousand-seat grandstand. But I must point out that if we have bid savings, and one of the things that's great about this methodology is, we know today that we're not gonna spend more than two hundred, two million five hundred fifty-five thousand dollars now, but if we get bid savings, we could buy these alternates. But this is a lot better than if we were to just go out and bid in the market, and if we came in over, then it's our problem. Right now, this construction manager is guaranteeing this price.
And then they will bid out those, the components?
Yes, they will. They're required to bid out the components. And so all of these components will have minimum of three bidders. They, we've looked at the bidders, we've already got some bid lists from them, and we're reviewing those, and they're, these are pre-qualified bidders. So it isn't just anybody, you have to have certain qualifications to, to bid on the project.
I have a few minor technical questions.
Yes.
First one is, I guess, more just a purely aesthetic question on the math. The little wedges between the field and the track, where we're not playing, basically where the high jump is, the long jump, what have you, the areas that aren't the long jump and high jump, why would you go with a black material versus, I'm assuming it's all synthetic? Why would, is, is that, is that the synthetic, is that the turf, or is that?
No, that, that would be the track, Eric. That's what they call the D zones.
Okay.
And we want those surfaces. So in a high jump, if you can think about, you know, where they start, and they run, and they circle through, we want that surface to be the same as, as the track.
Cause currently, right now, we had, right now on that track, I believe that's grass.
Asphalt.
It's, oh, it is asphalt, okay.
It's asphalt.
Well, on the, well, on the north side, I think it's grass underneath the scoreboard, but the south one may be...
Right, well, that's because down where we do the long jump, it's just the, the long jump straight away, that's it, that's why it's grass.
Okay, that explains that question, cause I was like, why, if you're putting in synthetic grass, why would you have it black? So, okay, it's actually paved surface, okay. Second question, we're doing fencing around it. Right now, it's, you know, the traditional ugly gray chain link, are we do, is this, are we replacing with gray, or is it going with a vinyl coater, or, or, is it, are we doing colored fencing, or is it the same chain link fence?
Black. The black, it's a black vinyl coated.
Okay, that, that I like. What is our current home visitor, what is our current home size, home stand's seating capacity?
Depending on the width of the bottom.
No, right, right, no, right now.
Well, no, that's what I'm saying, though, depending on which measurement you go with, it ranges from sixteen hundred to eighteen hundred.
Okay.
The best way I can say it to you.[1795.25]
So, we'll say seventeen hundred.
Don't name names.
No.
Seventeen hundred, okay, so we have seventeen hundred on the home side.
Right.
And we have four sixteen, but seventeen hundred, and then we have, how many on the visitor's side?
Roughly five hundred.
Five hundred, okay. So, right now, we're at approximately twenty-two hundred capacity, okay. Those were my, and then ostensibly, the, the cost creep we're seeing is originally, in the numbers we were throwing around before, we are looking at the, uh, we're looking at theoretically a hundred thousand more for synthetic. Now, it's, the cost creep is now because we're going with a higher quality, or I should say, a different product.
Yes.
Uh, it's two hundred thousand.
Yes.
Now, my question I would pose is, when the lay facilities committee was looking at field costs, the number that was put into, presented to them was two point six.
Two point six five.
Two point six five.
I'm my father, I run down, uh, two point six. That was, but that was predicated upon the other fill.
The crumb rubber.
If you, if you had known it was gonna, if you were, if you were gonna quote it for this fill, you would've said it was gonna be two point seven. Okay.
Yes. Yes.
Now.
Two point, uh, no, two hundred thou, well, yeah, two hundred thousand more, so we've been two point eight five oh.
You would've said the lay facilities committee, it's two point, it's two point eight versus two point six, okay.
Yes.
I have more questions, but I.
Go ahead, ask.
Okay, um, so, so what you're basically saying is, we would reduce our home, what, two things. We're not gonna touch anything on the visitor's side, then. The visitor's side, you're just gonna use the same old stands that are there right now, is that correct?
No, we're gonna take those down.
And there'll be no visitor's seating?
Well, we, we would, we would propose to put in, um, uh, what they call tip and roll, they're, they're small portable bleachers. And, um, so those would be temporary until such time as we could afford to do something.
Or is that in?
It is not a number in there, we would use, we would use, um, uh, we would use budget money from the middle schools because, from the two middle schools, because those are included in the middle school budget. So we would use that future budget to buy these, and then we would move them over, uh, to the middle schools.
So then, where's the money come from the stands for the visitors in the future?
That's in the alternate.
No.
That, right. If, if, if it turns out that we're still using those, then we'll have to make up the difference at some, you know, when we go to the middle school project. Right, because we will have already bought them, we'll be using them at the middle, at the high school. And if, in two, three years, four, four years, when the middle schools are ready to open, and we still don't have visitor stands at the high school, you're right. We will then have a small deficit, this, it's not an, they're not very expensive, so.
I'm just, but, I guess, I'm just having, I'm having trouble with going from twenty-two hundred capacity now, which granted, we don't really always use that much, that frequently, to going to a thousand known with, uh, I don't know how many temporary seats. And then, four or five years, or six years from now, we gotta figure out, if we put those back at the middle schools, we gotta come up with money for new stands here. So that's, I'm trying to.
I, I agree with you, Eric, but I, if I could piggyback Ron on his question for one timing question, I, um, and that is, the, the bid process and timing for the bid process, where we would know if there were some savings that would help us get to this. What, tell me, tell me about the timing for that.
For the, the, the timing is, and we've, we've sat down with the construction manager, as, uh, any bid savings that exceeds that, uh, that number, the two point five, they'll allow, we can use those dollars immediately to buy, to buy an alternate.
I understand, I'm saying, when would that be?
Oh, well, that would be April, uh, April third, April third.
Okay, so, so relatively soon. And then, and a similar question, I don't know if you wanna do this later, Kristen, after we're done talking about this or whatever. I would like to hear whether there are any more concrete than, um, just decisions or discussions around fundraising. So, at some point, I don't know if now is appropriate or what.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm, I'm not sure a lot has changed, um, within these last two weeks. I think that the people that we're sort of having conversations with are waiting to see what we do, um, to be very honest with you. So I think that when we know what our concrete plan is, then it's a lot easier for Jeff and I to go out and sit with folks, um, and say, here's, here's what we're getting, here's what we plan on opening in September, and this is what our needs are that are remaining, and this is how we'd like you to contribute to the project. So, you know, what I can promise you, I, I guess, is the effort in terms of Jeff and I being very committed to going out and, and doing our best to try to raise money to finish this project the way we see fit. Obviously, I can't sit here and promise you a, a check or a signature, but I can certainly promise you the effort. That will try to make sure we complete the project.
But your donors are not willing to do, they're not willing to commit to anything until they see what the board's doing to do.
That's correct.
Do you have any information, I mean, I, I was sort of pressing on it before, uh, when we were talking, you know, the, the grand vision for a, a coach's dream, if you will, for capacity. Right now, we had a couple of games that were high attendance. If we drop our seating capacity down to this for foreseeable, for the foreseeable future, how likely are we to see being at capacity with, uh, let's say, twelve hundred or fifteen hundred seats?
Yeah, I mean, I'll be honest, I mean, this, the seating's an issue. I mean, you know, right now, we're looking at a thousand seats, that's less than, you know, our gymnasium. You know, so when you think of it that way, I mean, I think it could be challenging, certainly, um, you know, based on who we're playing, and if it's homecoming or that sort of thing. You know, we wanna get basically to at least twenty-five hundred, but as you've seen, to five thousand seats, not only for our own gains, but just for rental opportunities. I mean, there's certain minimums that people wanna have for events, so that's the other reason why we're trying to get more seats in that.
The, the point that you just brought up about rental possibilities, the number, the, the capacity, seating capacity's gonna affect our ability to shop around, isn't it?
Yes, it is, yeah, it's one of the first questions that they ask is, you know, how many can you seat, what's your size of your press box, that sort of thing, so absolutely.
Can you roughly guess what it would mean if we only put a thousand seats there?
I mean, I think it'd be hard to, you know, really predict in black and white numbers for you tonight, um, but I would tell you that, and I think you all got that chart last week, when I showed you the comparison of who's got stadiums and their seating. So you can see, I, I think the smallest one in that group was maybe twenty-five hundred, and most of them were right around four to five thousand. So, you know, if, if you've got facilities that are available that have that kind of seating, obviously, we wanna try to be competitive with that if possible.
If we rent a facility out, what do we get, what do we pay? What, I mean, if, if ABC wants to come use our, our track and field, as is, or let's say, our facility at twenty-five hundred seats, seats. If someone rents our facility, what do we get? I mean, I'm looking how mu, and I guess my question is not, and also in that rental agreement, are we responsible for all, you know, security, li, I mean, I'm looking at, what do we net when we rent out our facility?
Yeah, I mean, the, the range right now, Eric, has been anywhere from twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars within the last two years if we went to rent a stadium. And usually, when we do that, you know, we've brought our own, like, game management crew, but they've done all the concessions cause they wanna keep that revenue, um, security, we've brought our own, you know, if you wanna open up the press box, it was an additional cost. If you wanted to use the locker rooms, it was an additional cost, so those things, um, kinda get priced out separately, but that's basically the range.
Well, that's, cause that's what I'm trying to get a sense of, okay, if we, you know, it's a cost benefit kind of a thing, where if we get something in, that's great, but I'm just, I, I, we, I know Steve's been very good about not selling this project that, oh, we're gonna cover the capital costs from rental. I'm looking at it as, if we can get some rental income to defray costs and to be put towards future improvements. It's not gonna retire the cost, but if we can, I, I see rental income basically as a revenue stream for maintenance and improvements, and not deferring, or not retiring the initial setup cost. But that's why I was curious, because it's not, it's not gonna be, it's not worth it to, to net a hundred dollars, and we're not gonna be getting ten or twenty thousand dollars, that's not realistic, I think. Or that might be the gross, but it's not, sure ain't gonna be the net, okay. I got more questions if you guys wanna.
Keep, keep going, I'm, I'm thinking.
Okay, so what you're pitching us now, then, is a two, just under two point eight-six million dollar GMP. Then the question I'll throw to, to Steve in the middle and the folks in the back, what is the likelihood, that's the GMP? What can, based upon prevailing trends, is it gonna be, okay, it was two point five eight, and it comes in at two point, you know, five seven, or it's gonna come in at, what is the likelihood that we will not hit the ceiling on the GMP? If you were a betting person?
I wouldn't bet, okay, because, uh, first of all, they're taking the risk. If they felt that they could get this in lower, that would be a lower number than the two point five, all right? And so, uh, I've worked with a lot of construction managers, sometimes it's just happens that by, by the marketplace, you just hit it right. That's when you get those savings, but you can never, I would advise you, you cannot depend on getting the bid savings.
So basically, we're, we should say, okay, you're not, if, if by the grace of God, that all of the stands vendors are free, so they're looking for, if somebody's hungry for work that week, you might get lucky and secure, you might shave off, uh, twenty-five, fifty, or seventy-five. But there's not, it's not likely that we're gonna see that GMP come in three hundred thousand dollars below it. Cause otherwise, they're not doing their job.
Well, it, it could happen, but our recommendation is, don't count on it.
Yeah, don't count on it.
Right.
Right, okay. Cause I, my, the problem I'm having with the, is I thought the visitor stands were, now it's, we're, we're going for less capacity. And I'm, I'm really having trouble, not to mention other stuff I've been harassing you about before as well. It's very difficult for, you know, now the, the stands are shrinking as well, it's, um, that's, I'm having trouble with that. I know we wanna stay in budget, but, you know, it's, it's, we gotta go to, we have to explain the decision, you know, it's, again, predicated upon us going with synthetic as well, cause that saves you two hundred and fifty thousand, if I'm reading the numbers correct.
If we don't.
If you went with, if you will, if you go with grass versus synthetic. But that brings up a whole other discussion, which we haven't even tiptoed into that yet.
Let me just say, that this project looks like it's a three million dollar project to me. And I'm just, I, I want our numbers to be good, solid numbers, and it looks like it's a three million dollar project, as opposed to the two point five eight eight.
Uh, is that because what you're looking at is the total GMP? Is that what you're?
The contract sum is three million dollars.
Yes.
Three million, three point oh-two-nine million dollars. So, so, so I, I wanna be clear, because we've got, I think we've got a little bit of an issue here.
Well, wait a minute, let me just make sure we, everybody is clear on that, and I know there was a question, and we did, we did, when we sent out the email, uh, we did explain that. The budget for the cost of work was two point six five oh. There is always on top of that number, if you look at the budget and cost report, and the second for the high school.
Uh-huh.
You will see all of the other costs that go on top of that two point five. That is, we are taking a percentage of the CMR's general conditions, right now is one million three hundred and eight thousand, we've already.
Wait, but tell me where you are, son.
I'm on. This is the budget report.
So what you're, ostensibly, you're doing two point six million in bricks and sticks.
Yes.
And the overhead cost is coming out of the PI, which is in the eleven by seventeens.
No, not PI.
Not PI.
Okay, okay, okay. The, the overhead, the, uh, the, the fees are in the, the fees, the fee numbers are in here, well, they're, they're here too.
Yeah.
But, two, you're basically two point six million in bricks and sticks.
Yes, so it, when we're, when we look at the high school, see where it says cost of work seventy-one, three fifty-two, eight one five? We're gonna actually reduce that by two point five eight eight, if, let's say, after today, if you approve this GMP. The other costs are percentages of all those other numbers that are in, are in black. And, and maybe, Ron, if you can, if some.
Well, I'm, I'm, okay, my struggle is, looks something like this. When we, when we were talking about the two point six five, I had in my mind that it was a complete project, okay? Now, now we're saying, I, I can understand that maybe we always intended to be the cost of work, or what, however we, whatever terminology we use at this point. But the question that is in, in my head is, if you recall, we are saying that within the context of the bond issue that we went out for, it was my understanding that we had two point six five million dollars in there to deal with the stadium. I mean, that's what I had in my head, and what you're telling me is that I always had the wrong number in my head.
Unfortunately, it wasn't explained very well. What it was is, it was two point six for the hard, that is, the cost of the work. All of these other costs were not, we have not increased this project budget. This, these numbers for the, that you see that bumps it up to three million dollars, were budgeted under separate line items, not under that two point six. They were always there.
Well, I mean, yeah, you, you can say that. That doesn't make me feel bad.
Uh, I, I understand that, I understand that. And maybe it's our fault when, when the master plan was done, uh, that it wasn't, wasn't explained that well. And I, I would agree with you there, that way the master plan works is when we got all those numbers, you know, from the state, and remember all those, those things, you look at, it's very confusing, and it doesn't show these breakdowns.
And, and the reason this becomes a little bit significant is that then if it's three million dollars to do somewhat less than what we thought was half of the project, then our fundraising goal had, needed to always be more than two point six five.
But, uh, you're, you're right, but I will tell you this, Ron, the two point six five oh was based on using crumb rubber. If you, we would go back to what was originally specified, the crumb rubber, we could get the thousand seats back, the, the other thousand seats.
Still a three million, or still a three million total, when you affect vigor and features, still a three million dollars. So I mean, the issue we, I guess, the problem we have is as much, no matter what, I mean, for, forget grass versus turf.
Yeah.
Forget seating capacity. The issue I think the board has, from a public standpoint, is the number two point six has been ballied around left and right. And then, matching funding has been ballied, ballied is probably the wrong word, been thrown around a lot. Now, the flip side is, is that, that two point six is for a dream football complex of double seating capacity, which we can have another discussion on that later on. I think the problem we have is that two point six was thrown out, even though two point six meant two point six bricks and sticks, three million total cost.
Yes.
So I think the issue the board has is that for us to say, okay, well, that two point six, that was the asterisk, and the total number's three, and that three is going to get you less seating capacity. I think that's sort of.
But Ron, but Eric, I can tell you this, we could get back to the seating capacity if you, as a board, decided to go back to crumb rubber. We could get that, all right, so we could get, so.
But I, I, I guess for me, the, um, the issue that, I, I like the way that you articulated that, Eric. This is what, the, this is what we are going to be struggling through for months and years, is these types of conversations that will, and this is our first foray into this, and the relationship with, um, the Facilities Accountability Committee, and this level of education of the public, um, needs to happen, and it's a lesson in maybe needing to happen sooner, and, and how we can communicate that detail out, because I, I don't think anybody believes, I know I don't believe that, that this was anyone trying to pull the wool over anybody's eyes, it's just the way the project budget is, was developed. So, um, I think the more critical, the two critical issues are the, are the surface and, and the seating.
Right, well, the, the reality is, even if you went with, based upon the, it's, it's, you're playing King Solomon here. Okay, if you go with synthetic, you save a quarter of a million, you save, you save two hundred and fifty thousand for grass, but you still have the, if you, but you're still three million, you go to two seven five. But if you wanna get the seating back, you're back to three million. If you go with grass, then that creates a whole chain reaction in regards to the diaspora, cause we're taking two fields, well, we're taking the east field out of commission, and we're gonna lose Wiley, so.
So we need.
It's, it creates a whole domino ripple effect that you're, we have like three choices before us, and they all suck. I mean, that's the best way to put it. Well, no, from, no, because, because there's no way we can get what we want for the two point six million total cost capture, is the best way to put it. We can't get twenty-five hundred seats with a synthetic field.
Well, but Eric, these are, these are the.
I agree with what you said, and, and, but I think, I think it wasn't explained well at the beginning, cause even when it was at two point six, it really was three.
Right.
All right, it really was three. It wasn't explained to the public, it wasn't explained to the facilities assessment, and you know, that, that's because the way, at that point in time, doing the master plan, we were using the, the Ohio School Facilities methodology, and they, they suck all those numbers out.
Right.
How we, I'm, I'm just going, public perception versus.
And I agree with you, yes.
And the reality is, is that there's no way, no matter. And the reality is, is that there's no way, no matter how you slice it, there's no way we can do any of our options.
But, but I.
For the, for the total cost capture 2.6.
I, I choose to look at it from a more positive perspective, and that is that, that the, the community has, members of the community have spoken and said that they have concern about the product that we were looking at. And there's been a considerable amount of research done, and, um, around an alternative product that's still, that will not make some members of the community happy, but will make some members much happier than, than the other one, and me much happier than the, than the crumb rubber. So, so we made that, you know, we're, we're here making that decision, or we've made that decision, I don't know where people fall in that, but the, the, that is going to cost us.
Right.
And so then we have to, that's the community engagement process that, that, um, has brought us to the point of we're going to spend a little bit more money on this project.
And if, and if I could just build on that, I think that, um, this is a good experience in another respect, in that these are the kinds of decisions that we're going to be facing going forward. It, it's going to be a challenge for us, um, you know, that we're going to have to make some hard decisions about budget, and about scope of the project, and about what we want, and.
It's our first toe in the water.
What our priorities are, and, and that's right, this is the first chance, and, and so, uh.
No.
Good experience.
Can I just add one editorial? I'm not sure this is going to be very helpful, but, you know, when we started looking at these numbers, when they came back and they weren't really what we thought they were going to be, when we realized we were going to have this issue, I think, you know, when we sat around the table, we said, okay, you know, what are sort of the non-negotiables? You know, and obviously, I think this goes without saying, you think about the kids. So as much as, you know, I, I want a 5,000-seat stadium, what I really want is a facility that the kids are using every day, for practices, and, and marching band practice, that they can use. So with the field and the track, and again, take out whether it's going to be grass or synthetic, those two things to, to us could not go, you know, below any kind of level. So if you're going to take out seating, okay, we, we can live with it, we're not happy, it's not going to feel great maybe, but we can live with it. I don't think we can live with a subpar track, or a field that doesn't have the performance that we need. And so that's kind of where we came to, all right, what's the one thing that maybe we can reduce?
And that goes with, when I was doing aerial views of different track and field complexes, to get a sense of what, what seating capacities are, what people were doing. And that was the one, the biggest variable, regardless of surface material, was, yeah, some people had synthetic with a lot of seating, other ones had synthetic with less seating. Someone had, some had grass, Beachwood has like, no seating, it seemed like. So that was the one variable, was seating capacity. So, so what you're saying is, the, is the athletic department, seating capacity is a negotiable item, other ones are things that you, those are the things you want, everything else around it is sort of, you like it, but that's not the most important.
I just think, you know, you have to prioritize, and I'm prioritizing on a daily use, not just on a, you know, five games in the fall, or 25 games in a season sort of thing. I pouted about it the whole meeting, but.
Yeah. I, I, I'm struggling mightily with this, and I just want to try to clarify a couple of things, and then maybe I'll, I'll, I'll make a, a further comment. The, uh, the way I'm reading these alternatives, this says that if we go with natural grass, we save a quarter of a million dollars, is that correct? Am I reading that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Having, uh, you know, kind of understanding that, I guess that's, that's fine. If we, in fact, if, 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 if we thought, and the public thought, we were buying a 2.6 million dollar project, and it turns out to be 3 million, from, at some level, we think that we're already over our budget, will we, will we say that? You wouldn't think so?
No.
Okay, that's, that's, okay, then that's my issue.
I think that the, I, I too, I mean, and I may be dead wrong about this, but I think the public's going to want to see, what do we do? Is this a good-looking stadium? I don't, the people who are gonna, when it's all built, say, that's, you spent, you went a little over budget, you said 2.6 and ended up 3. If anyone says that, and they may, but if anyone says that, and it looks great, that's a different thing. If it looks shoddy, then it's a different thing. I mean, it's, that's all, I think at this point, people have agreed to, and, again, maybe I'm very wrong on this, people have agreed to over $100 million, do it all.
Yeah, I think that's right.
That's, that's the basic thing. 300, 300, 400,000 extra here and there is going to matter to some people, and it is a lot of money, but on the, to the general public, they said, do the whole thing, here's the money, do it right.
Right.
And we just got, so that, that's what we've got to keep in mind.
That's the very point that I'm trying to get to. If doing it right means even more than the 3 million, why aren't we talking about putting more into it so it can be what we want? Right now, we're talking about something less than what we want. And we're already saying that we're going to spend more money, so is, is it the expectation that I, that, that from our public, that we'll come with the thing? Or are we going to be satisfied having half the seats that we have now? You know, I mean, there's, there, that, that stuff is in there. And, and, and so my thinking is, we get the first project out, and we're already, you know, shaving off, and I think reducing the expect, you know, reducing the expectations. So I'm with you on that comment about, let's do it right. I think it's exactly, I think this has got to be, uh, this has got to be a home run, is what I think.
But Ron, the process, I'm, were you going to say something?
No, no, go ahead, that's fine.
The process that we have before us of approving the, the GMP, which is what we've, we're at, we're going to be asked to do, um, and then, um, having the, um, alternates available, and then saying, if we approve this project, we have a few weeks to get some other firmer commitments for fundraising and, and things like that, could get us to that place. I, I know that we can't guarantee it now, but, um, I think timing, am I right, that the process is only requiring us to do the one?
Yes, yes, however, um, you could very well say, we want you to take one of those alternates irrespective of how the bid day numbers come in, and use contingency to pay whatever the difference is.
Right.
You have contingency at your discretion.
And those are going, there, those are going to be our decisions all throughout this process.
That's right.
Yes.
Yes.
Because I have one comment and one question regarding this. First, I'm apparently the only one, but I, I'm not as concerned with the difference, because I did hear you say, the extra was budgeted into the budget, right?
Yep.
So, so this is, this is somewhat, I mean, I, I understand the point. The point is that, that people who want to look at this are going to say, oh, you really were spending this for the project. But the point, but this is a, a matter of communicating what should have been communicated originally, and I appreciate you taking that hit, but, 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 but the point is, it's not that, that we're over budget, we're over what is the perceived budget of that part of it.
That's right.
So, so I mean, I think that's a, that's a key difference for me personally. I, I get what you're saying there, Ron, I really do.
Okay.
You want to say that?
No.
Okay, all right.
I've said, I've, I've said what I got to say.
The, the other, the question I have for you is, on the alternates, does that raise some of those other numbers as well, if you take an alternate? So are those percentages, in other words, of the, of the total?
Oh, yeah, does that add, uh, does that add soft costs?
No, that's with the soft costs. If we were to move that alternate, these numbers, if you wanted it in the GMP.
Includes soft costs.
It includes all of those.
Does it include the soft costs as well?
Yes, includes all of them, yes, because we couldn't, they guaranteed, first of all, uh, Panzegill Bain guaranteed the alternates. So if you were to select one today, that's the number we would just add to the total contract sum. It does include all those.
And, and I mean, I, just going back, I think we can learn from this mistake, definitely.
Yes, yes.
I have a, I, I had a, well, and I, there was a idea, and I guess, I know, I don't, I had conversations with Mr. Shigalas before, before this evening, I was questioned, the question I was throwing out was, um, right now, we don't do very much on the interior of the field with advertising signage. I know Lakewood, for example, I asked a coworker of mine, Lakewood, their entire interior's got, you know, banners and things like that. The question I would pose is, is there any, if, if we were to, again, I'm trying, I'm looking for ways to put some skin in the game for, for the constituencies, as well as make the cost structure more palatable. Your thoughts on if we, if you were, if we were doing, applying the rental income or banner income, or advertising revenue towards defraying some of these, these capital costs? What, what are your thoughts on that? I know, I think you weren't, you were not a big fan of the idea, but.
I, I'm not.
Okay.
I'm not. I, I think, my recommendation would be to make the decision based on the capital dollars that you have available, and not on some potential future revenue that we may or may not be able to obtain. Just my, that's my opinion.
I mean, and then, I'm sorry. No, I was just saying, the reality is, I'm very much on the, I'm viewing, on the one hand, I want to do this thing right, I want it to hit, I want this to be, because this is going to be the first part, and it's going to, I want it to, I want people to go, wow, come Labor Day weekend. The flip side is, is that I'm also looking from the, uh, the public's perception in regards to dollars and cents on a spreadsheet. So that, I think is much, I'm, I'm much more concerned, to a degree, perception versus cost, because in the, in the scheme of things, we're, we're really talking a, it's a relatively small percentage of this budget, as well as the, the bigger budget as well. So I much, I agree with my colleagues, and, and, is for me, if the alternate is, the first thing I'd want to do is, I'd want those to increase that, that seating capacity, at least to have comparable to what we have right now.
And you know, if, I mean, again, this is, at some point, we're going to have to have the, the surface discussion. I, I feel very comfortable, if we go with the non-rubber crumb synthetic surface, the argument can be made, I think, to the community, because that is what's driven up above. If we did everything else that's not an alternate, went over the, went over.
Right.
Guaranteed maximum now, and I don't know, we have to talk about, I don't know the technicalities of how, how and when that can happen, versus when we find out about donations and things, but I have no problem going to the community and say, yes, we spent extra money because we want to get this thing that has non-carcinogens in it, that's not going to require pesticides, that's not going to, I mean, that they just think this is going to be good for our community, good for our kids, better than what was the cheaper version. We have to say, yes, we spent more of your money on that because we think it's healthier. I have no problem making that argument.
You said that differential is 218, because I thought it was going to be 100 differential.
Now, the differential is, is 200, between crumb rubber to Envirofil was 216,392 dollars.
And our, and our original estimates early on were about $100,000. These are real numbers now.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's a fairly large discrepancy between, what, what was the estimate for?
Well, the 100,000 was the difference between, um, the, wasn't it the difference between the grass and the Envirofil, or the crumb rubber? Or was it the crumb rubber?
Crumb rubber to Envirofil.
The Envirofil, what we have is 216,000.
The, the Envirofil is 216.
More, more.
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 More than crumb rubber.
And this GMP has the Envirofil.
Well, this is, to a degree, when the, for example, on the library project, and the renovation of library, the main library, the original budget was just to do the front of the building. And then the city Cleveland, I said, no, if you're going to do it, you got to do all four sides. So suddenly, what was supposed to be just one facade ended up being all three, that's, to a degree, this, like Eric's point, if you're going to do, the, part of the expense we're seeing the cost creep is because you're going with a, a different product that, uh, the staff is recommending a different product, and that, that's what's driving up the cost, well, part of the cost.
Can, who can speak to the why now? Who can articulate that?
I think both, yeah.
I mean, I, I can, I, I really need, you know, we, we've spent a whole lot of time tonight. We've got a lot of interest from the community, people are saying, wait a minute, why now? And I, I really need to hear.
Yeah, so I'll start, and I think Kristen will join, join in a little bit with me. I think for me, there's two key reasons to, to move ahead now. One is, it'll never be cheaper. If we wait two years, we're going to have inflation and escalation costs that we're going to have to deal with. So doing it now, this summer, saves us money. That's the first reason. The second is, um, with the loss of the east side, the fields on the east side of the high school property, and the loss of the football field at Wiley, um, we're going to need to have increased activity on that stadium field, to manage all the activities that we're going to have for our, for our students. And that field is just in terrible shape, it cannot accept any more use than it has right now. And so the only way to get more usage out of that space is to upgrade the field. So those are, you know, really, from my perspective, the two primary reasons, in addition to the bleacher issue. You know, we're addressing the bleacher issue, we've known that, that those needed to be upgraded, as well as the track, something must be done to that track, even if it's just a patch, it's not safe right now, it has to be addressed, so.
Yeah, I, I don't think we want to lose sight of the track, because originally, before, you know, the vote passed and all that, um, the thought was this spring, we had to do something to the track, that there was no way we could run another track season on it, so that's kind of where this all first started. So when the bond did pass, and we knew the money was there, the thought was, well, if the money's there, and we know we're going to be preserving that site, why don't we start the work right away? And for all the reasons that Steve certainly said, and there's a, I could lay out, and to some extent, I think, had, the logistics of trying to find a place for 125 football players every day, for where we're going to play games, um, the transportation issues, and all of that. But the other piece of it is, if we don't do this, and we're not playing games there, I, I don't want our kids to have homecoming at Bedford. You know, I don't want to have senior night at Brush High School Stadium. I, I want these kids to have a home site. And I think that for athletes, that is a really, really significant part of their season. So if it's possible to get this done now, if it's possible that we can still have the homecoming parade coming into that stadium, and have our senior night, and if we can have bleachers so we can put our marching band up there and really showcase them, then we want to do that. And so I know it has felt rushed, but I think it's being rushed for really good reasons, because if you talk to these kids, and you see how important those things are to them, then I, I think you get motivated to get this done.
And I would just add to that, that, um, going back to the facilities master plan, that plan had always envisioned that the stadium portion of the site would remain operational throughout the life of construction.
That was going to be my question, so thank you.
Right, so, so when Kristen first brought this up, we started looking at, we went, immediately went to Gilbane Construction and said, okay, guys, what do you really think about this? I mean, that's what our facilities master plan assumed, but are you okay with this? And they assured us that throughout their planning processes, and their thinking about how to utilize the site during construction, they saw absolutely no reason why we could not renovate, move ahead to renovate the stadium, and still have no difficulty doing the rest of the high school site, um, when that starts.
Mind if I just jump in there, and with our friends back in the back, and we have to say it right in front of them, them having said that, so, are they going, will they stand behind that, so if something happens during construction?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted, I didn't, thank you for saying that for everyone here.
Well, and I just wanted to remind everyone about my point earlier about the spend down requirements, so, you know, this is a significant.
Give me the rough on that, Scott. What, what, what are the rough spend down requirements for, for year one?
About, about 13 million.
About 13 million.
Yeah.
That's 10%.
And the, and the, and the overall enabling projects are about 15, they're not all going to be spent in year one, right?
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
So this is a pretty significant part of that first year spend down requirement.
So part of, I mean, to a degree, you got two components, you got an emotional one, which is, okay, these kids are stuck in trailers at Wiley for two years, but at least they have a homecom, they, they've got a field that they can play on, they got home, they at least have some semblance of a normal high school component for the, during the diaspora at Wiley, and then from a, to, also to a degree, assuming a synthetic field, you're viewing it to a degree as a, I think I used degree, degree twice in that sentence, you're using it as an enabling project, because the synthetic field allows you to do far greater So part of, I mean, to a degree, you got two components. You got an emotional one, which is, okay, these kids are stuck in trailers at Wiley for two years, but at least they have a homecom, they, they've got a field that they can play on, they got home, they at least have some semblance of a normal high school component for the, during the diaspora at Wiley. And then from a, to, also to a degree, assuming a synthetic field, you're viewing it to a degree as a, I think I used degree, degree twice in that sentence, you're using it as an enabling project, because the synthetic field allows you to do far greater usage per square footage. So during the diaspora, it also becomes, you could argue that the, the synthetic field's a, a enabling project then. Is that?
Yeah, you could.
Okay. Other questions, observations?
Or we get to.
Well, we, I guess we're.
I mean, I guess by accepting guaranteed maximum price, so we're, we're there, and that's what we're, the bids will come in at that or lower, probably at that. And so this extra three to four of things that we would, you know, that would take us to the next level on the whole thing. Do we, then you go after the donations and we hope for the best, and maybe that comes through.
That's one way of approaching it.
And if it does not, and we just, then we have, do we have an opportunity at that point to make another decision about whether to allocate that, or once those bids are in, we're, we're done?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know what your timing is.
I thought it was April 3rd.
Well.
We have to, to, to buy these additional grandstands.
They need to know by, by, they can't, we can't delay much. Yeah. So you need April 3rd.
This is related to going back from the 1,000 to 2,000.
Well, that, the, the question I would pose, though, to Kristen, though, is that your folks, your folks, because it sounded like they were interested in study rooms and stuff that was more not, not on the, not, they weren't interested in grass, or they weren't interested in the field, or the track, or even, I guess, then we start moving beyond, I didn't get the vibe that they were interested in stands, they were interested in things that were more for player development. So the question I would pose is, I don't want to set up a false expectation that
That's a good point.
you're gonna make some phone calls, and they're gonna say, no, I really don't want to spend money on stands. I don't want us to set up a false expectation.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's accurate. I mean, I don't know that they want to put their name on an extra 1,000 seats, and I don't know if they're gonna put their name on it within a month, honestly, too. I mean, that's a quick timeline, I think, to try to get that kind of donation.
Okay. What I want to do is take a five-minute break. This has been packed full of information and emotion, so let's take a five-minute break. Okay, okay, okay. Here, here, here is where I think we are. Steve, Steve, are there other things you guys want to discuss relative to this, this project?
No.
No?
Yeah, well.
Okay, you do.
We don't, we don't have anything else.
We don't have any questions, but if you, obviously, if you have questions, we want to.
Well, we have to talk about the surface.
Talk about the surface.
Let's talk about the surface, yeah.
So, I have a couple of comments, if we're gonna jump into surface, before you launch in. So I did send out some additional information about grass systems, and that came up at the last meeting. And then I did make contact with John Rogers, the project coordinator for the Department of Plant, Soils, and Microbial Sciences in Michigan. And I did forward, he, he recommended me to the Sports Turf Managers Association website, and I did forward to you some information on grass fields that I thought, you know, was pretty interesting information. So did send that to you. I know that, I, I did try to make contact with Chip Osborne. I called him Friday, called him Saturday, called him Monday, and I, he did not return my call. I also tried to get ahold of Brad Fresenberg and Amy Foudy, they're two folks that do turf management at universities, separate universities, but did not make contact with them. I do know that a question had come up about the issue of, of the silica sand and the issue of silica dust. And that's really a non-factor for us, because the silica particles, the sand particles are actually coated in the polymer material. And so silicosis, silicon dust, not, not an issue for us at all. I should note that this particular system has been, is being utilized by the City of New York City, their Department of Recreation. And they conducted a lot of study and independent testing on the product, and found it to be completely safe, and endorsed it for use in all of their playgrounds throughout the entire city. They have 12 million constituents. So that's, that's a lot of the research that I'm relying on when I say that, that it's safe. So just a couple of comments that I had to share.
I, I, I think the, the issue for me that I, and maybe I could try to articulate the, the grass issue in, in Nancy Pepler non-expert language and see if I'm hitting the right mark, and you all correct me or, or at, because my, my desire generally would absolutely be to use natural grass, organic natural grass. However, that, and, and where that's being used, it's my understanding, I really want you to correct me if I'm wrong, where that is being used, it's being used in systems where they have multiple fields to use, and so they wouldn't be getting as much use as our field requires us to use. They're literally, that, it is possible to have an organic natural grass field for use for football, or maybe for football and one other sport, but it's, but nobody that we have found has used it at the, at the level that we need to use it. Is that accurate?
Yeah, the, the schools in northeast Ohio, and I, and I say that just based on the weather.
Yeah.
There's four schools that have recently, like, within the last five years, put in grass fields. And the only one that is happy with it is Olmsted Falls, and they only play football games on it, and that's it. No one else is allowed on it. The other.
They don't practice on it, no other sports use it.
No, they do not. There's no other sports. And the other four schools, those athletic directors indicate that they were all in the process of trying to replace their grass fields with turf fields.
And, and if you look at the information that I sent from the Sports Turf Managers Association, it talks about the, it gets into a lot of detail about grass, and how it grows and the growing season, and, but summarized, they, they do talk about the need to allow the grass some rest time, some time to regenerate, time to regrow. So I think that's consistent with what we're discovering when we talk to some of the local folks, is that, you know, no matter how you do it, no matter what the grass is, it isn't, you're not gonna get as much use out of it as a synthetic turf field. I mean, that's, that's my, my conclusion. You're just not gonna be able to.
Brown Stadium, which some people cited, is used seven times a year, or something. You know, it's not used for practice, it's not used for other.
They have the money to fix it.
Yeah.
Now, um.
And I think it's probably eight.
Okay.
No, going along, I guess.
That could be argued, though, too.
Well, that's true.
Now, a, a counterargument could be made, well, you, you know, you've got Canterbury, Garrity, and Boulevard you could use for practices. Now, the, the flip side of that is, that's ba, those fields are, here's a piece of flat land, at Canterbury it's sloped anyway, it's, those fields are ostent, are just, here's a piece of dirt, practice on it. If we wanted to make them true quality practice fields, you would have to put drainage in, we'd have to level them out, we would have to incur expenses at each field, who knows what's under the ground at Boulevard, and you still wouldn't have locker rooms, water stands, or anything like, if, if we went to that model. And then I know people always say, oh, just buy up the homes on Goodnor, and then, but apparently they never.
The only one who says that.
No, I, no, no, not Goodnor. I would say Washington, no, I say Washington, not Goodnor. But no, if you want to just expand the east field across the street, there's 20 homes, between acquisition, demolition, corollarys, grading, getting our friends at City, City Hall to let us close off Goodnor.
You're talking about eminent domain, too, just to be clear.
You're talking, you're talking a couple of million dollars to do it. So it's not, even if we wanted to get on site, you're talking, you know, with that.
Well, and if you go back to, you know, talking about the other fields in the district, remember that even in the best of situations, we're doing that with three grounds people, and their only responsibility is not just fields. So I think there's a bit of a challenge there as well.
Because it still wouldn't, even if you, even if you, even if you spent the money to upgrade those three fields to, for practices, you still have all the logistical issues, and you still have, you have none of the amenities that you have at the high school campus of, in two, in three years, locker rooms, training rooms, water fountains, you know, that luxury like that. So you, you could theoretically do it, but you'd still have all the logistical problems you're dealing with right now, of getting the kids from the building to those practice sites as well. So it wouldn't, it would address part of the issue, but not all the fringe around it.
Anything else?
Yeah, I, I, well, gosh, I, Nancy, I appreciate what you were doing. I, you know, I guess I came to the conclusion that there wasn't a perfect solution here. And I walked in as a natural grass person as well. Probably more for, I can't give you really scientific reasons for that, but that's, that's, that's just, it just feels right, for whatever sets of reasons. And, you know, I started reading all this different, all these articles, everything I could find online, and then luckily, some of our community gave us articles to read as well. So I was trying to read about different things. So I guess I first wanted to check about safety, and I was trying to check about environmental impact. And so I, I read a couple of things. I got to say that overall, I didn't, now, I'm not a chemist, I'm not a horticulturist, but I didn't find most of the data tremendously compelling. One of the things that's been brought up is the incidence of staff, MRSA, which is the, the resist, the one that's resistant to methicillin, methicillin resistant, I think. And if you look, first of all, those bacteria, they, they want to grow in a, in a, on a natural environment, so you're talking about a, an inanimate object, which is the, the, the turf. And there actually is some level, they, they checked to see, I think they call them phomites, it's an inanimate object that can transmit bacteria. There's no data that shows any MRSA ever growing on, on, on synthetic turf. And beyond that, what they talk about more is that maybe the synthetic turf, you're more likely to get scrapes. And, and so that would be an entry point. Well, that, so that brings me back to something you said, Kristen, which is, I think, no matter what, it's an entry point, no matter where you scrape your, you know, if it's on grass, or if it's on synthetic turf. So I would, I would suggest that something you've said is a real, is gonna be an important part of this, if we go this route, and that is, to be sure that the coaches are well-trained, be sure that the students are well-trained, of, of, you know, what can happen. There's the talk about injury data, and if you look at the injury data, depending on which report you read, you, it's, the, the injuries are much less on synthetic turf than they are on grass, or other injuries are less significant, less significant on grass than on natural turf. So again, it's sort of a wash for me, it's just, it's, it's all about trying to keep the fields well-maintained. And in both cases, you have to keep the fields well-maintained. The one thing, I guess, I was learning as I was reading, and, and I think we've got the synthetic turf person here, they're at 40% porous, is that right? The, the, the field, is that right? Something like that? It's some pretty high percentage porous. So, so what happens is, is the water goes through, so what, from the standpoint of stormwater, a lot of this is gonna be based on what you do with the subbase, right? And we're talking about something like a 10-inch subbase, is what I understand?
Correct. And we have a piping system underneath there to hold that water until the storm is over, and then it releases it out on the field, out into the storm system.
Right. So the studies I was reading was, was talking about depending on the subbase, and in either type of field, is gonna make a huge difference. You get, you'll get less runoff oftentimes in this type of field than you would in a natural grass field. Not always, and, and it just really depends on how you, how you prepare them. I think the other argument is, what is, what is going, what is being taken with it from the field itself, from the synthetic field. Again, I, I read everything, I, it was not conclusive to me. In the end, so I wound up finding that all those things were not compelling enough to make my decision for me. And so I went back to what you're saying, Nancy, which is the fact that, what is the practical solution for our district? We are landlocked. We have two basic field positions near, near the, near the high school. One of them is going to be completely, or at least partially unusable during construction, where you're gonna need to put more on the, on the main field. Otherwise, you wind up taking kids over to Dennison more, which is the crumb rubber field. So better to keep them here for that, for the people who are against crumb rubber. I think that the, that the 218,000 extra dollars we're talking about spending is, is a compromise. And I do think that it is, is something in the middle. I just think, in order to have an effective natural grass field, we need to maintain that thing really well. I don't know that we have the staff to do it. And I think you have to realize that in terms of environmental concerns, if we have to, if we're gonna have to offload kids to other places, that means we're busing them, or there's, there's, there's running more engines, there's, I mean, and besides, which I think the other part of this whole thing is, I think this is better for the athletic program. And I think we have to start to realize that one of the things that we have to do as a board is recognize that there are things that, that bring kids to the school, that they, that makes them want to come. And it's not just the curricular things, it's the extracurricular things as well. This, I think this is better for the marching band, I think it's better for the athletic programs. You know, I'm, I'd be, I would be anxious for us to look at ways that we can programmatically help our students to understand things that are better for the environment going forward. But I think, in this case, I think this is the right, the right cause, this is a synthetic field.
Other discussions, questions?
Um, I had, I was trying to find the number, I couldn't. And I, I'd probably piggyback on Cal's comments. I was, I think, for those who watched the questions I was posing in the previous meetings, I was not exactly, and Steve will know from the way I've been grilling him, was not a, I was like, make the case, prove the point. And I think specifically with the, the athletic department saying, hey, here's the, the need. To me, my, my issue is if we spend 2.6, 2.8 million dollars on a, on a complex with a gra, complex with a grass field, we're basically buying a car we can use one day in the week. And we don't have that luxury. So I think if we're, we're doing it, we gotta do, we have to maximize our utilization. The one, Steve's been poo-pooing all my ideas of how to derive revenue to defray capital costs. We had a, numbers before on water and sewer, water and sewer that we spend in a given year maintaining our current field. I think it was like around 10 to 15,000. Is it possible, because this is one of the issues we have with the synthetic surfaces, that in 10 to 15 years, you're gonna have to replace it, could we assign the monies that we currently spend to water that field in the attached sewer bill, can we allocate that fund to a future field fund, so that in 10 or 15 years, when that surface needs to be replaced, we have at least some money towards that? Is that, can we do that? That would make me happy.
I think we can.
Okay. Because if we could do something like that, as much as the other ideas were a bit more complex and well-wishing, this is a known quantity, I think that would at least, it, it, we're not saving money on those components, because we'd be allocating them, but it does mean that you've got some funds going forward. I don't want to give the future school board a, a bill.
And so in 16, 16 years, we, we will need 1 million dollars to replace that field?
I don't think it's 1 million dollars.
No, no.
How much is it?
It's 400,000, approximately. Well, last time they said 400,000.
Yeah, the estimates we had at that time were about 450,000. You would replace just the, the, the grass fibers, you'd reutilize the infill material, and we would recycle, rather than place in a landfill, the, the carpet, the actual carpet. So the estimate right now is about 450,000.
I don't expect that we would have all that money to, from, from this idea, but the, the idea.
So you think the pad will never need to be replaced? Is that what it, that means? I think.
It, it's more than the pad, it's the drainage systems, all those, those are significant costs.
But you wouldn't need to do that until 12 years, 15 years.
Right, you wouldn't need to.
You would not have to do that.
But that, that's more.
But it's 16 years.
Well, the, the underlayment, you'd probably do every, like, like every 25, 50 years.
The, yeah, the 450 includes the pa, the pad, too.
Okay.
Did include the pad.
But I'm just trying to at least get something in the kitty, so that, that.
So in 16 years, we'd have a third of that money?
That's where, that's where I'm going with that.
Okay, anything else?
Well, I just, I, I just wanted to finish off a conversation we started to have. I, I heard Eric, both Eric's say, and I, I do think that the stands are important. I mean, I, I don't know if we can put that in right now, if there's a way to do it, but I, I.
Sounds like we have to, based on timing.
Well, I think, I think, yeah, I think we can, and the way we do it is we vote on it. You know, if we, if we put the motion on the floor to say that we want to include those alternatives or whatever.
GMP.
That would be, that would.
I mean, it's in, as far as I'm concerned.
Could we expand the GMP?
We could actually put it in.
The GMP up to the.
But who votes on the alternate then?
By adding like 357,841 dollars, for instance.
Well, the total for the, all those alternatives is, is basically.
I'm cutting out the generator.
I'm cool, I'm cool with the home stands. I'm not, I'm not, you know, the visitors, eh, so be it.
I think what you would do is, you would pass the resolution by vote, and then, I don't know that it's necessary for you to amend the GMP as it is. But all you need to do is then just
Direct you.
give direction to the administration to say, we want you to accept that alternate, no matter what happens.
But, okay, but what I heard here was something different. Eric, this Eric is saying, I don't think we've got any specific decision on the floor. This Eric's saying, I don't care about the visitor stands. Someone else said, I don't care about the generator. I mean, so, so we.
This is the Eric.
Huh? Yeah, I just think we need, we need to be very, very explicit.
Yes, you need to be clear about which, which alternates, because there are multiple alternates, so.
Well, just slow down, Steve. I thought, I just heard you say that we could go with the base bid and add the alternates later.
But, no, what I was suggesting is, tonight, you could leave the GMP alone,
Right.
pass that resolution, and then tonight, give us clear direction, just by a recommendation, without a vote, about which alternate you want us to do.
Because they have to order them.
Yeah.
I got it, I got it.
You can't wait, that's correct.
I got it.
You can't wait.
But I, I think Eric, diaspora Eric, said, said that he, that we needed a home run on this. And I think that, I think a home run is what we need. And I don't, I don't think you, you shun the visitors with a home.
Oh, no, 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 I'm, I'm just, I was going for the.
All the folding chairs, man.
Well, let's, I tell you what, why don't we get a motion on the floor and debate the motion as opposed to.
No, we don't need a motion for the, for those, is what Steve's saying.
We can go and take the vote.
They need a wink and a nod on the alternates.
Yeah, we can take the vote on the GMP.
And debate, debate the, the alternates all you like. You can pass the mo, I'm saying, pass the mo, pass the resolution, and then you can debate the alternates all you like. We can spend the rest of the evening debating all.
I don't think so.
I don't want to do that.
Well.
I, I want to get it done.
Understood. I'd be in favor of that, too.
Okay, so we need, we have a Resolution D1. We should take these separately, right?
We need to take them separately, and actually, the first one has to, is not the guaranteed maximum price, we, we didn't quite get that right. The first one has to do with the board giving the administration, specifically me, the authority to. the authority to authorize change orders to the construction project. And you typically grant that when you award a permanent improvement projects to, to the administration. But it typically comes in the amount of 10% of the total contract price. Well, in this case, that's way too much money. That's way too much latitude. You would not want to do that. So working with Matt Sigoni at Squires, he recommended and actually prepared this resolution, recommended an amount of 50,000 dollars. So you would, this resolution, you would be granting the administration the authority to approve change orders up to the amount of 50,000 dollars, after which we would have to bring it back to the board for your approval.
Would that be in that monthly, the budget update?
It would probably come in the monthly updates, most likely. That's right. And you will definitely see them and be, they'd be tracked.
You'll see it, they're tracked.
Even if they're under 50,000, you're gonna see them in the checkbook that gets tracked every month.
Can you give us just, I mean, obviously, this is a huge project. It's a complete construct. A couple of things. You come, what's, you know, is, are we talking light switches? We're talking, what, what's, I mean, just in general, what were you talking about?
It's, it's really for unforeseen conditions. Here's a good example. Let's say when we're digging and we find old foundations that weren't in the.
And you gotta remove them out, okay.
And we need to sign a change order right away because, first of all, the equipment's there. We can, we can get it a lot cheaper. And it's really for those unforeseen conditions. For changes of scope, this methodology, I would hope that we're not adding light fixtures or things like that after the fact. That's a, those are, those are, are not good change orders, but.
You foresee this more as excavation, opening up a wall, oh my God, there's a cone here, we gotta move the door over.
Yes. And there's renovation, the renovation portions also are the unforeseen. Again, we'll have change orders. Let's say we open a wall and, you know, there was piping that we didn't discover that we have to remove or, or maybe we have to do some asbestos removal that wasn't, wasn't, it just found it. It's way there. And that's what those types of change orders would be used for.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll accept a motion to authorize the Director of Business Services and Assistant Director of Business Services to execute change orders up to 50,000 dollars.
They'll move it.
Second.
Any other discussion? Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Okay. I'll accept a resolution to authorize a guaranteed minimum price.
Maximum?
I mean, maximum price. I always say guaranteed maximum price for.
You'd like that, wouldn't you?
The stadium, I know that's right. Yeah, for the stadium, you have to. Okay, any motion?
So moved.
Second.
Anybody a discussion?
Despite the, the nature of the dragged up, the commentary, I'm excited. I know I don't look it. I'm tired, but I'm excited.
Okay. Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Zucker?
Yes.
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Mr. Silverman?
Yes.
Anything else?
Yes, now we would need direction relative to the alternates.
Well, I guess, okay. We don't have to vote on that.
You do not have to vote. You just need to give us direction.
Well, I think that it's clear that everybody wants the seats.
The, the two alternates for the seats.
There's two alternates. I'm, well, when the.
I would say for visitors, too.
Well, I'm just looking, you were talking, you were mentioning this whole Minnesota, the middle school, temporary. What's the price tag on those?
We don't have a price tag.
I don't have one.
Do you know how many there are?
They're cheaper.
So, so like, it's a tipper roll bleacher, so, I mean, you're probably fitting 25 people on it. I mean, they're low. I mean, they're not.
But we'd buy, we'd probably buy about six or eight of them, you know.
I mean, it's, it's not ideal, especially, you know, you bring a marching band. I mean, I'm just thinking.
They're, they're basically those real, real small ones. They're nowhere near the capacity what we have right now.
You see the ones that are on the corner of the softball field right now? Those are tipper roll bleachers.
There's no way, even if you did a whole row of them, it's not gonna equi, be equivalent to the capacity we have right now.
No, no.
Okay, then you got, okay, okay.
Stands, stands, no generator.
What's this emergency generator? What's that?
In case the lights go out.
Right. The light, power goes out, right.
Then they come out.
All right.
Candles.
Yeah, they go out. You got flashlights. So everyone's got a cellphone. You put all those.
Do we have such a thing now?
Not for the stadium. We do not.
Now, is this a mobile one or a permanent?
No, it's a fixed unit.
Okay. Do we have a mobile one?
Does it kick in automatically?
It's, it's in the diaspora.
You know, I'm sure you people don't have good vocabulary. Don't, don't the trades have, I mean, I see the construction site.
They do have small ones, but they're not near big enough. That's why I hesitated. I was trying to decide what to say. I mean, they don't really, right, they have small little ones, but they're nowhere near big enough to power up those lights.
Is it the type that would automatically come on?
Yes.
Under certain conditions?
Yes.
I'm comfortable seeing if we have the funds later for that.
We can, do we have to, we could do that at a later date?
I'm okay with that. Maybe it's part of our fundraising.
That's an easy one to do.
You can add it later, yes.
So, so you have, you have, you have support for the first, for one and two and three sometime?
Got it. That's what we needed. Thank you.
And not four.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else? I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
Mr. Gaynor?
Mr. Cobble?
Yes.
Ms. Pepler?
Yes.
Mr. Register?
Yes.
Yes.